Thank you, Kat. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's Board of Trustees work session agenda. The date is October 26 and the time is 6:09 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Per usual, we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all.
Thank you. Okay, so we have an exciting meeting tonight. We'll begin our meeting with a board presentations. The first presentation is by Jeff Brodlee. He is the Chair of the Architecture Review Board. So we will turn this over to him for his presentation. As we await for Jeff, this is a specific presentation about Chapter 65 regarding the historic and landmark presentation of our village. And we see Jeff here, so he's going to be sharing a screen momentarily. Thank you, Jeff. Good evening.
Okay, great. Thanks. And this is not a virtual screen. I actually have the Bill of Seal S wallpaper in my office. No, just kidding. We had a board meeting last night. So Kat, can I share my screen?
You can if you want to, and I'll help you if you can't.
Yep, here we go. Let's see if, okay, great. And let me do a slideshow from the beginning. Let's see if this works at the slideshow. Okay, so what I'd like to chat with you folks about is a section of the code having to do with maintenance and repair of historic properties. Most folks within the historic district take good care of their properties and are proud of their properties and the village. But there are some that are not, and the code provides for that. So preservation, as I say here, it takes many forms and it's part of what we do. It's in our very name. And the section of the code that authorizes the board in the historic district points to its very being as the protection enhancement and perpetuation of landmarks and historic districts. And then enumerates it in A, B, and C, and D. And A, protect and enhance landmarks. And D, protect and enhance the village's attractiveness to residents and to visitors. And when we speak of the village and we speak of historic districts, it's not just the structure. It's, it's all those things around it. It's the broader sense. And preservation and protection have a larger meaning than just the parsing of words may allow. Now, behind, behind that, in specific to maintenance and repair, Chapter 6510 makes the point that it is, that no owner or person with any interest in a property shall allow that property to deteriorate or fall into disrepair. And as, as to cause a detriment, a detrimental effect to the character of the landmark or historic district. And while this had previously been the purview, if you will, of the Board of Architectural Review and Historic Preservation recently, and as amended in August, it included the Board of Trustees having that shared oversight and judgment and determination. Within the village, there are several properties of concern. So let me just point to a few. So imagine, and that's not, imagine we're walking down the village and this happened to be today. It's a beautiful autumn day. We're walking along Job's Lane and all is beautiful. And then we fall upon this. This is 38-42 Job's Lane. It's a courtyard. As you picture, it's worth a thousand words, but let me give you a little bit of background, which you may be familiar with, but two years ago, the then Building Inspector Chris Talbert approached the Architecture Review Board, asking them to apply Section 6510 and to opine or make a judgment as to whether or not this was constituted a detriment to the historic character. The, there was discussion at that point, to cut it short, and again, the video is, is available to those who want to see it. But the Chair said, and the rest of the board members, to the most part, agreed that while there was some disrepair, it did not rise to the level of detrimental. And that in fact, there was concern that there were other buildings, including the Village Hall, which had fallen into some level of disrepair. The good news is that under the current administration and trustees, the Village Hall is no longer in disrepair and is no longer considered by any stroke of the imagination a detriment. The bad news is that this property in that two years, in that two-year period, has fallen into further disrepair. And I think it's apparent to the, to the eye that it is a detriment to the historic district. Let me just point out a couple of other properties, just to give you a sense of the, the issue. Now, this is 22 Windmill Lane, which also came before the board a few years ago. The then owner was eager to repair and restore it. Zach Studen-Roth had gone out and done an extensive survey of the property, felt that it had extreme historic value and lots of elements inside that were worthy of keeping. I understand, while nothing came with that particular owner, I now understand that it is changing hands and that the mayor and the trustees are working with the prospective new owner to do something. And just, you may want to comment on that in a moment. This property, 765 Hill Street, came to us three years ago with a request, demolition request on the basis of hardship. Over the course of about a year, the board did approve the demolition of a building on the property just immediately to the right-facing or to the east of this, which was a barn that had no longer had historic value. But it was agreed and understood that this property would be protected and salvaged and protected. A bit of an update on that, in April of this year, the board granted the applicant a partial demolition of a nonhistoric element of this building. I mean, even to the point where we agreed that certain hardware would be salvaged. So there's a good faith effort, at least in terms of what was agreed to in April. Nothing has been done to, to my eyes since then. But I believe the intent is there, and I will speak to the property owner's representative, Mr. Bennett, with whom we have a good relationship on the board, a working relationship. And I'm sure that the, the issues will be addressed. So of the three properties I mentioned, two are apparently in some level of discussion and remediation. The, the, beyond the code is the issue of enforcement and protection, as I say here, does require action. There are penalties, including imprisonment and fines and/or fines. So anybody who's connected to these structures and properties are subject to those penalties. So it's not just the, the property owner, it's the, it's the contractor, it's the tenant. So nobody can start pointing fingers at each other and saying, it's not me. It's anybody who has responsibility for maintaining that property. And as you can see here, and as you may know, the fines for demolition can be $5,000 a day or $1,000 a day for any, any offense. And so that can mount up pretty quickly. And it goes further to say that anybody who demolishes or alters the properties are obligated or could be obligated to restore the properties. So I'll stop there for a moment, since we have a shared responsibility. And I know the property on Job's Lane was a particular concern. So I'm going to turn it back to the board for either questions on this or discussion about their particular concerns.
Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate the presentation. It's definitely very informational. And also wanted to thank you for your volunteer work, serving on the Architecture Review Board as the Chairperson. It's generally a thankless job. And so you and to your colleagues, thank you very much on behalf of the Board of Trustees for your volunteerism to the village.
Thanks. Well, I'll just say one thing, that there are four other members, and they are equally involved, equally committed. And I said to them, and I'll say it to you, that it's, it's a pleasure working with them.
Excellent. And we have, we have John Gregory, we have Sarah Latham-Kerns, we have Peter DeWitt and Mark McIntyre, who again, who are serving on the Architecture Review Board. And so again, we wanted to thank them and, and recognize them. A few things I wanted to say. So the goal here is not to single out one particular property, nor is it to have the goal of giving citations. Many of us took office with the goal of revitalizing the village and also making sure that we preserve the historical integrity of the village. So unfortunately, you know, when we see certain properties that appear to fall into the state of disrepair, that our code gives us a responsibility to take action, we clearly want to make sure that these properties can get into compliance. So I want to reiterate to our board, the goal is for these properties to go into compliance so that they're consistent with our historic district. The goal is not to single anyone out, and the goal is not to give citations. However, I also wanted to add that we were fortunate enough last week to speak with the soon-to-be property owner of 22 Windmill Lane. They have showed us some potential plans. And what they have showed us is that their goal is to restore this building, which will significantly help out Windmill Lane. They wanted to preserve the historical structure that is inside of it. And I actually asked them further. I said, well, while you're working on these plans and getting approvals from the respective boards, would you even be so willing to make sure that in the interim, you can do something to help restore this building? And they said, absolutely, we want to help out the village. We want to do what's, what's best for the community. So I can tell you that 22 Windmill Lane has already approached us, and they hope to be closing soon. And they are eager to get into compliance. And so we thank them for their efforts to do that. And I'm very glad that they'll have the opportunity to hopefully provide something that makes the village, you know, look like a village downtown, look good. It's also my understanding, 765 Hill Street, that they're already in front of various boards. And so that they're also trying to get into compliance, once they have the appropriate permits in place. So we again, wanted to thank, thank the owners of this property, thank the builders, contractors, attorneys who are working on this to help us get the, this property into compliance. As you pointed out on the third property that's mentioned, this was brought up two years ago. They have had ample time to get into compliance. And we also would welcome a conversation with the individual or LLC that owns this property. Again, our goal is for them to get into compliance, to restore and repair this property. And we are willing to help them in any way in order for them to proceed accordingly, according to the proper village channels. But under no circumstances can, can the village tolerate properties that are falling in, in disrepair, where the owners do not have an interest in getting into compliance. So I would encourage this board to take the appropriate action needed in, in order to use the tools that we have, in order to help out our village and help out our overall community and to preserve the historical integrity of our village. So with that said, I would open this up to any comments or questions from, from board members.
Mr. Mayor, Ken Gray here. Can I chime in for a second?
No problem.
Thank you. Thank you. My understanding, and Jeff, maybe you can confirm this, that no certificate of appropriateness was applied for or approved for any of the work that was done in the courtyard. Is that correct?
Yes, to my, to my knowledge, that's correct. Yes. The only thing we received two years ago was a request from the Building Inspector regarding the application, the application, if you will, implementation of 6510.
Okay. And do you have any photographs of what the condition of the property was prior to the owner or whoever did the work to the courtyard? Do you have a picture that predates that work?
No, I only have the current pictures. Maybe in the Building Department, but I don't recall any being presented at that meeting. But obviously, we inspected the space at that point.
Okay, thank you.
There, there are likely photos online if, if, if you need one, or if you'd like.
Mayor, for me, Ken, just to note, just to education, the property was slated to be redeveloped. However, there was some pushback from the community, understandably so. And I would also check with Tend to see if there's any plans currently to see if you are going to move over any plans of redevelopment as well.
Okay, I'm, I'm not aware of any current pending plans submitted to the Building Department for redevelopment. But I would be more, I would be more interested in seeing a photograph of what the property condition was prior to the work that was performed.
So there was a. I've got a, I've got a picture here.
There was a town center of the courtyard.
Mr. Mayor, did you have something?
I'm just sharing the screen now.
There it is.
Okay.
Not a great picture, but at least some.
No, 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 that, that's a good picture. I'd like that picture to become part of the record of this meeting.
Okay, I can submit this to you and our village clerk as well.
Thank you very much. So it, it demonstrates that there is in fact was a demonstrable change in the condition of the property without the necessary building application, building permit, or certificate of appropriateness, is what I'm suggesting. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
My knowledge.
Are there any other comments?
I just want to make one. Jeff, thank you for your time and your effort for the presentation and effort of the mess. So thank you for your time on the ARB, all the years you served, and now as Chairman. Just for the, have you spoken with Mr. Linkoff in terms of what the status of the application on Hill Street is? I know, as the man pointed out, it is in front of the, I believe, in front of the VBA. Has there been any further, you know, any further amendments to the application on Hill Street?
Oh, on Hill Street, the 765 Hill Street?
Correct.
No, like I said, just the, in terms of what came before the ARB was a request for partial demolition of a nonhistoric element to the rear of the building in April. It was a cordial and agreeable meeting and ended with a positive, good faith intent. If there are any zoning issues, that's, that hasn't, that wouldn't come before us.
Because if I recall, there was an issue with, it was in front of you guys, and it was, it was a back and forth thing, if I recall.
Yeah, and I think, I think that was all resolved at around the same time, either before or after they came, came to us in April.
Okay. And also just for the public certification, 22 Windmill actually dates back to the early decades of our, of our town, probably 1680s. So I would strongly encourage the, the new aren to get to work and to revise, to provide the building. Because I, I believe it's been almost 20 years since that building has been occupied or even have a proper sevo. So I hope, for the record, I hope we see some action there soon.
Thank you, Trustee Glocklin.
If I could add context to the Job's Lane property.
Roy's mic is muted.
Have to speak. Okay. In my role as the plant, that's okay. In my role on the planning board, the applicant came before the board and presented a rather extensive plan to completely remodel this property, basically tearing down the existing structures and replacing with new structures. The structures themselves are not historic. They were built in the, in the 70s. And that plan received considerable opposition from the community because the courtyard had been, was viewed in the community as a tremendous community asset. And I believe that the vital question of that application was, did the property owner have the right to do with his property as he saw fit? Or was the community's interest in keeping the fountain and the courtyard more paramount? That question was never answered. The applicant decided to withdraw his application and shortly thereafter, made the changes to the courtyard, the degradation of the fountain, the degradation of the steps and whatnot. And leaving us in the position we are today, two years later, with an increasingly debilitated property. I believe the proper course for the applicant would have been to maintain the courtyard and the property as it was prior to its, its degradation and resolve that question, one way or another. But that didn't happen. So I do believe that the village does have the responsibility to make sure that the properties within our historic district are maintained to a standard of respectability. As people come and walk down Job's Lane, they shouldn't have to be looking at a place that looks like just a, nobody cared for it, which is absolutely true. So that's a little bit of context. I do think it's a complicated issue, but I do think that that property should be required to be brought back to its, its standard of appearance that it was prior to its degradation.
Mr. Mayor, not to down rabbit hole here, but just to add to Roy's comments, Ken, if you can, just give me a second here to explain. So as Roy said, the new property was redeveloped in the 70s. That was after a fire that occurred that burned down the structure that was there at the time. And I'm wondering, someone brought to me back my planning commission days, whether or not the courtyard was the outline of the historic house that stood there 45, something years ago. I'm curious to know, does this board or the ARB have, I'd be curious to know, if there's any file to see if that courtyard is the, again, the outline of the, of the, again, the house that stood there prior to the fire in the 70s. Because I, that was brought to my attention by, by a, by a, by a resident who's down there late 70s. So I'm curious, again, I'm curious to know what historic value the property itself has. Again, structures themselves are not historic, but I'm wondering if, if the property was developed in a way to preserve any kind of open space or, or a, to give homage to what was there before. So.
Might I chime in a little bit? And while that, that might be a matter for the board, for the ARB or BARHP to examine, should the applicant come before us with a redesign? However, for the issue that we're dealing with now, the application or implementation of 6510, the issue is whether or not it is falling into a state of disrepair in its current form to such an extent that it has created a detriment to the historic character. So the, and to my view, to my eyes, and I think the pictures, and thank you, Ken, for asking for the before and after. I think it's not a complicated matter. It's a simple matter. This property has been left to rack and ruin. And it is, in my personal view, a detriment to the historic character of the village. And that's the really only issue that's before the board trustees in our shared responsibility for implementing 6510. And it's here before you now. It could come before the ARB. We would be in the same position and have the same discussion.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the board, or shall we move on to the next?
I just want to say thank you, Jeff, and to everyone on the ARB for all the work that you're putting into this and everything that you do. Thank you.
Okay, so my, my, thank you, Gina. So my understanding is that you folks are going to be reaching out to the gentleman. And I guess, and it's up to the Building Inspector to apply the fines if, in fact, the trustees determine. And so I don't know, Ken, if the trustees have to make a vote on this? Or just, it's a matter of opinion?
Jeff, there's a, it requires Board of Trustee action, which I expect will be considered tonight. And I expect that the Board of Trustees may direct the Building Inspector to take certain action with respect to this, to this property, if they determine that the property has fallen into a state of serious disrepair.
Right, okay. I now recall your procedure at, in the ARB, we vote on something immediately, immediately after it's heard. I realize you folks do that at the end of your sessions.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, great. All right, thanks, everybody. And I appreciate your compliments to our board. But again, you folks do a ton of work. So thank you to all of you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good night, thanks.
Good night. So we'll keep on moving. The only other thing I would add actually is that I believe this board, or many of us, to be a very business friendly. And we want to help our businesses. And so our, our board has the opportunity to do things such as give easements, especially for updated septic, which is critical. So we're, we're definitely here to try to help our businesses. And if there's anything that we can do, we want to, we want to use our, our role here to help advance the continued revitalization of the downtown. So that's why I'd like to add thank you again to our board. Thank you again to the Architecture Review Board. And we can move forward to Board Presentation Number Two. That's the Treasurer's Report. So we'll have our village administrator and village treasurer, Charlene Kegel-Betts, with this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So our financial reports were four months into the year. And as of September 30th, our, for revenues, our adopted budget was 32.2 million. We received so far to date, 29.6 million. We have several revenue items that are exceeding the budget or projected by the end of the year. We have several revenue items that are exceeding the budget or projected by the end of the year to exceed the budget. Earlier this year, we had a presentation on the end of summer, a report for Cooper's Beach. Cooper's Beach budgeted amounts exceeded by two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue collected there. Some of that, I believe, will be used to put back into the infrastructure there. I'm waiting to get some quotes for some of the requested equipment. And I'm hoping that'll be coming up in the next couple of meetings from our D P W department. County Public Safety Tax, Sales Tax, that's our police revenue sharing from the county. That came, that's a one time revenue that's collected, allocated through the county executive's budget that came in at fifty seven thousand dollars higher than we had anticipated. Building permits currently as of September thirtieth are at five hundred and sixty eight thousand, which is forty three percent of our budget. With around one point three million is what we budgeted for building permit revenues, trying to, you know, maintain conservative revenue approaches for our budget. And mortgage tax is really way far ahead. Got the first quarter payment came in and that was for, for our fiscal year, six hundred and fifty one thousand. We do receive quarterly payments from the county and that is at seventy six percent of what we had budgeted because we budgeted eight hundred thousand. Expenditures, adopted budget thirty two point two. Actually, there was a typo in the original monthly report, treasurer's report. It's actually was revised and sent to the board shortly before the meeting. That the adopted budget figure for expenditures was actually last year's adopted budget. So far this year, we've expended nine point eight. Revenues are a little bit more difficult to, to project out. A lot of our revenue, our revenue is actually collected earlier in the year because of our tax collections or, you know, ninety five percent, as you can see below, of our tax levy has been collected so far this year. So we kind of front load our revenue and our expenditures kind of lag behind. And then we have a couple of revenue expenditure items that are paid in one shot. For example, our retiree health, I mean, our retirement contribution will be coming up in December. And that's a big chunk of funds. We've already paid a good share of our debt service upfront. Everything else kind of lumps along as, as the year goes through. Insurances are paid on a quarterly basis as well. So tax collection is very strong. We came out of the box hot this year with our online. We did actually collect quite a bit a lot sooner than we had in the past. Thanks to Danielle Burns for implementing our online tax payments and when our website, other items we're working on here in the clerk's office and the treasurer's office. Civic Plus, we are, as we discussed at the last meeting, we are working on a redesign of our website and hoping to have a lot more interaction there. Our sewer district task force is reconvening next week or two, two weeks from now for our next meeting and we will be, I believe, starting to see from our engineers, a draft map and plan of what the district's going to look like. So we have making great progress there and are finally our capital budget, which has been lumping along because every time we have something close, we end up having, we have three new depart, acting department heads right now. So we had to revamp and, and give them a chance to review what was submitted by their predecessors. But we have department meetings this week and we're hoping to have an adopted capital budget for the next meeting. And that's all I have. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Charlene.
Thank you, Charlene.
If there's no questions, I would again just say, looks like we're, we're on a good sound path here. Our board obviously likes to practice good fiscal and sound responsibility. We're very proud of offering the first tax cut, property tax cut on not only assessed values, but we actually cut the tax levy for the first time. And we can remember, but we also cut the tax rate for the first time in twenty years. So something we like to continue to put out there. And while cutting the tax levy is extremely hard to achieve because that's cutting overall spending year over year. This particular year, we hope to be in position to at least cut the tax rate. I don't think the tax levy would be possible to cut again, but the tax rate would be a good goal for us to have. And this would be the second time in twenty years we were able to do this. I, I believe we probably should have been able to cut the tax rate many times, given the dramatic increase of assessed values. But we only have this board together for a limited period of time. So we'll work closely with our village treasurer administrator, budget finance committee and the rest of this board to try to reduce, reduce the tax rate again. So thank you, Charlene. We appreciate it. And then we're also very happy. You know, these aren't the biggest things that people talk about, but having online tax collection for the first time is a nice step using our civic plus software, nice step forward. So again, things are moving in the right direction. So thank you again. Charlene, we'll continue moving forward with our agenda tonight. We do not have any public hearings and we do not have any communications to the board. But we have a number of discussion items and the first discussion item is the outdoor dining extension. I do not know if Gary is here, but if not, I'll let our deputy mayor take it as our liaison to the public works department. Well, Brad Creppin wants to do the presentation on the outdoor dining extension, but probably better if Gina does it. So unless Brendan, if you'd like to do it, we're waiting. But okay, I don't see him raising his hand. I'll, I'll let our deputy mayor take it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we have currently, the outdoor dining has been extended to Sunday after Thanksgiving. But there's been quite a few people that have asked, and the restaurants have asked if we could be extended even longer than that. We have no problem. This, this board here is very pro-business in the village and we'd love to do that. We just would need some cooperation. It worked last year in December because the, the restaurants actually followed the instructions that were given by D P W in placing the tables and chairs in the center of the brick area. Because if it does snow, they have to have brief, free clearance on each side of the sidewalk in order to put the plow down the street, in order to plow properly. So it would have to be in three feet from the curb to prevent any of the plow damage. And they have to realize that planters, anything that's in, in the way or in front of the businesses does have to be removed regardless. We're not responsible for any planters if, if the plows go into them or, or the, or the chairs and tables. We can't be liable for that, anything that's related to the snow removal. So those areas would have to be cleared. So that's just, that's just about it. So I am, I'm fine with that as long as the, the restaurants are, you know, cooperative, which they have been. And I suspect that they will be again, so that we could even extend this beyond the November twenty ninth.
Thank you, deputy mayor. Are there any questions, comments from the board?
For the record, I have no problem with this. I just want, council, is there any, any news from the state as to what the protocol is after November? This, the government want to send, after dying to, into next year, does anyone know what the protocol is going forward?
All right. So, 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 so mayor and trustees, the, the issue at this point is the state liquor authority and, and the state legislature has expanded and extended the extension to use municipal property for purposes if the municipality agrees to extend certain properties for restaurant purposes, really actually state liquor authority purposes for a liquor license. It does expire in November and it's completely subject to approval by the municipality. So what I'm hearing is that this board is okay with extending that availability to municipal property for these purposes through November. It is unknown at this point whether or not the state is going to extend that past November. I suspect they will, but we don't know that yet. So if this board is comfortable with extending the availability of the municipal property through November pursuant to the state legislation, then that is completely something that you can support. If that's what you want.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay. We can, you know, move on. We have our next discussion item, which is Halloween festivities. So there's a few things that we'd love to discuss. First, just so the public is aware, Elm Street will be closed from three to seven P M. On Sunday evening. And wanted to thank our South Hampton Village Police Department, as well as our acting chief Lieutenant Hertzow for her help and their help in making the streets, Elm Street safe. This is not a village sponsored activity, but all we are doing is we're making sure that the street is closed down so that trick or treaters and residents can enjoy Halloween safely. That's number one. Number two, there's a lot, a lot going on. On Saturday, there's a Little Lucy's pet parade. We understand that if it does rain, that we push to Sunday. There's also a event at the Southampton History Museum. That is rain or shine. There's an event at Southampton Cultural Center as well. And there's other, of course, activities throughout the village and throughout the East End. And then on Sunday, we have a number of exciting activities. But one thing that the village is, is doing, or we're going to be help, help organizing is we're going to have Southampton Village's great pumpkin hunt. So what we're going to be doing is that we're going to be providing clues in order to have a pumpkin hunt, a pumpkin scavenger hunt. And so children, students of all ages can go and take these clues and will be basically having these pumpkins throughout the, the village. And so every fifteen minutes, we'll be releasing a clue. And people can go and, and find, find pumpkins. So I've seen the clues. Wanted to thank Miranda Weber for her help. Diane Tucci and other residents who participated, but the clues are very good. We're very excited about rolling this out. If it's a, if it's a success, we can continue this in the future. Am I missing anything? Yes, there's a few other important things.
The eight forty five P M. Saturday night, the ghost hunting.
That's right. Eight forty five P M. Ghost hunting at Rogers Mansion.
And the Halsey.
And the Halsey House. I understand maybe sold out because it's so popular. Wanted to thank Tom Edmonds and Connor for doing a great job, as well as the Southampton History Museum Board. But if anyone's interested, it's a great event. There might be a few tickets here or there, but I understand that it could be either sold out or close to be sold out. And then we're also going to be doing a costume contest, which will end and, and aggregate at the Southampton History Museum. And then I'm not sure who planned this, but the, the winner of the contest will get to slime the mayor. That's, that's me here. So get to, get to slimy. And, and so that is open to anybody. And I know there's a lot of people that would like to do that. So I would just encourage you to reach out, go to the history museum, participate in this contest. You know, there was an election in June. So I know there's at least six hundred plus people that, that would like. I'm hoping to reduce that number, but there's at least six hundred people that would like to do it, just in the village alone.
We may have.
Right. So.
Raise some money.
So, and also wanted to thank Saunders for their donation. And if anyone else would like to donate, they can do that.
And Stevenson's toys is also donating.
I don't, I don't want to.
I just wanted to add that it was reported that, that the board was considering not having Halloween on Elm Street. And that was, we really just wanted the chance to check with the residents on Elm Street to see what they wanted to do. And they, they chimed in and, and emphatically indicated that they wanted to continue the great tradition of having trick and treating on Elm Street. And so that's really fantastic. We appreciate all of the residents there for being willing to open up their home and have their street closed down for, to traffic for the period of time. There is a box in village hall. If people want to help the residents on the street with candy, there's a place you can donate bags of candy, which would be distributed to the folks at Elm Street to, to help out with, with the candy distribution. Really looking forward to all the events of the day. In addition to the opportunity to slime the mayor, which I, I feel he's, he could have gotten a lot more out of this than he might, that he might have. We could have raised a lot of money, but that, that's his choice. But in any case, my store Stevenson's Toys will also be donating a bunch of gift certificates for, for other prizes during the day. So we really hope to make this a really wonderful celebration of, of the great Halloween tradition.
I just wanted to say just wanted to say also, I'm glad to see that the, we all came to compromise on this. I know it was, there was some points, some points of contention. However, I'm glad to see the hour festivities, although they're not, although we are submitting the rag muffin parade that, that will be returning next year. And I'm hopeful, I'm glad to see that we are, that we have these events coming up. And I hope that all the, the community members do come out and support these, these facilities. I know Tom at the museum does a great job. You know, seven days a week he's open. So, or close to it. So I, again, I would fully support the community, come out and support these stores and venues in the, with, with these events. So thank you.
No problem. By the way, if you want to sleep on it, you'd like to be slimed as well. Think you can get back to us tomorrow. Though my fiance who teaches fifth grade said that it's not a good idea to be slimed because it doesn't, it's very hard to clean up. So, so very hard to remove it, but it is what it is.
I'll think about it.
Okay. Okay. So that's what we have for Halloween festivities. We're looking forward to the Southampton Pumpkin Hunt. And two other quick discussion items I just wanted to kind of throw out there is, I just wanted to mention a number three that later on in the agenda, we'll have a resolution to honor the late John Holden for his service to the country and to the village. And what we'd like to do is in a ceremonial fashion rename or add a, a street for him right on Railroad Plaza, where, right next to Elm Street. And also right next to where we begin the July fourth parade. So we're excited to pass that resolution and again, wanted to honor and, and thank the late John Holden for his, for his service. And so we're, we're eager to rename or this, the street for him. And we think that would be a nice honor to him and his family. And then the fourth discussion item is that we have asked trustee McLaughlin, I know he's very interested in this and we appreciate and thank him for taking on this responsibility. But it's time to address the gas powered leaf blower. So trustee McLaughlin is going to be the liaison for putting together a group and he's going to come back to the board in time for our, our next board meeting with some suggestions for us and help us lead this decision moving forward. It's time. There's, there's no more time to wait on it. And then I'm hoping that, that trustee McLaughlin could, could help us come up with some legislation. Of course, that's the job of the trustees is to, to legislate. And so we're, we're hoping and we're looking forward to working with him and getting guidance from him as to what we can, we can do here. I know, I know it's an important issue for you and it was brought up the other day. So I wanted to thank you for your help here. Don't know if there's anything else that anyone would like to add on this topic, but.
Tomorrow night. I know, I didn't want to leave this to the, the workshop tomorrow night. Please. So tomorrow night, just a reminder that here's your chance. It's the public workshop for the, the company has a plan for the village and it's, you could go on, you could fill out a survey. We, we encourage everyone to participate. If you need this due, I don't know if you could, is it on the website, Charlene? I'm not sure. It's on the, it's on the website. Okay. And they actually, you have to go on through this, this skew because they're doing the Zoom. The planning company is doing the Zoom themselves and they're handling this. But we encourage everyone to at least do the survey. But please participate. Here's your chance and you, you get, your voice will be heard and how you would like this village to look in the years to come. So very, very important. We need your help with this and we encourage everyone's participation. Here's your chance.
Thank you very much. So we can move forward to the suggested, uh, resolutions. And so, uh, Charlene, I'll let you, uh, take it from here.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, resolution number one resolved that the claims for the warrant dated October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one totaling one hundred forty-six thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirteen cents. Warrant number A nine general fund be audited and approved. May we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number two resolved that the reading of the minutes for the public session of October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one be dispensed with and that those minutes be accepted as filed by the village clerk and that the actions taken at that meeting be hereby and are ratified and approved. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Post. Resolution number three, whereas the village code chapter sixty-five states that no property owner or person with an interest in real property located within the historic district shall permit the property to fall into a state of disrepair. Now therefore be resolved that based on the board discussions and presentations, the judgment of the board of trustees has determined that the property located at thirty-eight dash forty-two Job's Lane has fallen into serious disrepair based upon code, chapter code set sixty-five historic and landmark preservation, preservation, and authorizes the building inspector to take any necessary and appropriate action. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I. Hi.
Any opposed? Resolution number four resolved that the board of trustees hereby approves the request for a new sign to be placed at Railroad Plaza as a ceremonial name recognition in honor of John I Holden, World War Two veteran and village resident centenarian. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Any opposed? Resolution number five resolved that the board of trustees hereby is, hereby approves the closing of Elm Street on Sunday, October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one by the Southampton Village Police Department for Halloween festivities between the hours of three to seven PM. We have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Post. Resolution number six resolved that the board of trustees approves the contract with Main Street Agency Diane Tucci to plan and coordinate the activities for Halloween and Elm Street at a cost of fifteen hundred dollars. Um, actually, we're going to change this merits to be funded through, um, donations, correct?
Donations and I also am going to contribute, uh, to this. So it's at no expense to the, uh, any of the residents or, or taxpayers. Saunders generously agreed to make a donation and I will, um, will personally, uh, pay, fund the rest. Anything you could do to help out. So I just want to make sure that, again, no, no expense to the taxpayer. And, um, uh, so thanks, uh, for the modification.
So I'm going to amend this resolution. I need a, a motion to amend, um, to remove, uh, to, to, to replace the language paid for by his, by trustee special projects fund to be funded by contributions and for the village board to accept the donations by Saunders Real Estate and, um, Mayor Jesse Warren.
So moved.
So do I have a motion on the amendment?
I make that motion.
Oh, Roy's got it.
Okay, and.
I'll make the second.
Okay, so on the amended resolution, all in favor?
I.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. Resolution number seven resolved that the board of trustees approves the contract with Main Street Agency Diane Tucci to plan and coordinate the parade and tree lighting activities for Holiday Fest at a cost of three thousand dollars to be paid by trustee special projects A ten-ten-four-three-three. A motion?
Motion.
Second.
And then a quick discussion, maybe. Deputy Mayor, you want to talk about this? I know this is brainchild of you and, and Charlene, so, uh,
The holiday.
Would love to just, if you wanted to kind of talk about what this is.
Okay.
The activities throughout, uh, the village, starting at twelve o'clock, I think we have it set at now, Charlene.
Yes.
Uh, so there's going to be, um, well, I think I'm going to be Mrs. Claus that day. I'm not going to. And I'll be, uh, in a spot where people could, uh, the children come in at certain times and, and they'll be reading a Christmas story. Uh, there'd be other activities throughout the day and it will culminate with the parade of lights at the usual time at four-thirty. Uh, the lighting of the Christmas tree, uh, there's going to, uh, be fireworks after that. Um, so it's going to be, oh, there's a lot more things that, uh, are in the planning right now, uh, for a wonderful day. So I hope everybody will, uh, be able to, uh, enjoy. It's going to be a real, uh, celebratory, uh, uh, lighting of the tree that day, right after Saturday, after Thanksgiving, a full day.
Yes, it'll be a, 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 a coordinated, uh, event village-wide. Um, uh, the chambers involved, the BRC, uh, the historical museum, um, SAC, SCC, uh, the Christmas decorations committee. So we've been having, you know, meetings to discuss, um, you know, the, the, the possible events, sharing of ideas, having all these people together. It's really great. So there'll be one interactive map with the schedule of all the activities going on. It's also small business Saturday, shop small business Saturday. So it'll get, um, a lot of foot traffic through the village. Um, we're hoping to get some food trucks, um, at, on South Main Street. Because, um, what generally happens after the tree lighting and the fireworks is all the restaurants get filled up. And a lot of our visitors don't have a place to, to, to grab a bite to eat. So, um, more will be announced, but, um, we're, we're in the early planning stages and, um, uh, it looks like it would be a nice event.
Thank you, Shirley.
So, um, do we have a motion on the resolution?
I think we have, we have the motion.
We already had a motion. So all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Resolution number eight resolved that the board of trustees hereby approves the proposal received from VHB Engineering Surveying Landscape Architecture and Geology PC to prepare design plans for improvements and restoration to the war memorial located in Agawam Park at a cost of thirty-three thousand four hundred eighty dollars to be paid from trustee special projects A ten-ten-four-three-three. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, Pat.
All in favor?
I.
Hi.
Any opposed? Resolution number nine resolved that the board of trustees appoint Kyle Robinson to a full-time labor position in the highway department at a salary of forty-three thousand two ninety-three, uh, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-one cents effective October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Charlene, before moving forward with this, perhaps I could, uh, we could speak about it. I, I just, uh, uh, we want to make sure our Department of Public Works has as many, uh, great people as possible. So, uh, this sounds like a great hire, uh, but, uh, I didn't have the opportunity to, uh, to discuss this, uh, with, uh, with Gary. And just wanted to, uh, just, um, get a little more information.
So Mayor, do you, uh, Mayor, do you want to move this into executive session for personnel purposes?
If that's okay, we could probably come right back out. I just wanted to, uh, to discuss it over and then we can come out and, and.
So we can make a motion to table?
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
All right.
Any opposed? Resolution number ten resolved that the board of trustees approves the following budget amendment to increase the paving budget to reflect the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two state aid chips paving award in the amount of two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. Increase A three-five-oh-one state aid chips in the amount of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars and increase the highway paving improvement line A five-one-one-two-point-twenty-one by two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Explain, uh, to the public what exactly this is.
Yes, yes, Trustee. Um, well, we have a, we actually have a paving budget. This, this, uh, fiscal year, we actually have a dedicated line for paving. It used to be, um, grouped into the highway contractual line. Um, the state required, you know, uh, recommends that we have a separate line, the, the, uh, highway permanent improvement and paving. Um, so we did, um, have a, a budget. And, um, what happens usually somewhere during the year is we get a, a, a federal aid and a, a state aid announcement from, uh, New York State that they have, um, an award for us. And it is, um, not a grant that we have to apply for. It's based upon the miles of dedicated roadways in the village and allocation is made to all municipalities in the state of New York. So, um, this is the time that we pave because we try to pave, uh, the roads, uh, in the fall. It's less trafficky and busy. And also, um, we have to get, uh, we're kind of under a little bit of a, uh, time constraint because the asphalt plants close when the weather gets too cold and we can't actually pave. So, um, the, um, the DPW director came in with his schedule of all the paving projects. And he also had, uh, indicated that we were awarded this money. So, um, we've got an aggressive schedule to try to get accomplished in the next couple of months before the weather gets really cold. So, um, we had need to amend the budget just to increase the spending amount for the amount that we hadn't provided for in the budget because we weren't sure how much we were going to get.
Thank you.
So, so, so just to piggyback, can you hear me? Just to piggyback on, uh, what Charlene had said, the, uh, CHIPS, that, that people talk about CHIPS, C-H-I-P-S. That's an acronym for the Consolidated Local Street and Highway Improvement Program, which was established by the New York State Legislature in nineteen eighty-one. And as Charlene pointed out, it's, it's what's being apportioned to the village based upon the state legislature so that we can, we can handle some, um, street programs. So that's when people talk about CHIPS, they don't know, necessarily know what CHIPS is, but it's a state program.
It's not a police show from the nineteen eighty.
Right, right, right. That's what I want you to explain because that was, that was new to me when I became liaison to, uh, so thank you very much, both, uh, Charlene and Ken. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, so. One more question. Is this a, uh, is this a windfall or is this money that we were expecting and counting on?
No, we didn't, we didn't budget for it. We generally don't budget for it because we're not sure what the state is going to do. Um, and then whenever, uh, we get the word, we actually do the budget amendment. And it's usually this time of the year, right, when we're about ready to pave, so.
So, so, so the answer is we should expect something every year, but we never know what it is.
So, um, all right, so, uh, if, if there's no more discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
All right.
Uh, that, that concludes the, uh, resolution portion.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, there are no, uh, appointments, uh, this evening. We'll move to, uh, comments from board members. We did have some of those during the discussion. So we'll start with alphabetical order with, uh, trustee Arista.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, since we're talking about, I'll start with the paving since we were just talking about the paving. Uh, the schedule of the paving projects will be, and the road closures will be, should be posted by Wednesday, October twenty-seventh. Uh, um, that, as I said, that will be on the website. But for now, uh, we're going to, I would just wanted to mention that Main Street, Cameron Street, uh, in Windmill Lane from Hill to Nugent will have full closures on, uh, this coming Tuesday for milling. So when they start breaking it up about half of, um, uh, after they mill half the width of these streets, it will be open to one-way traffic. Uh, and then the rest of the list will be done, as I said, Tuesday, Wednesday, and that would be posted on, uh, the website. I, we can't get into too much detail because sometimes this, uh, schedule changes, uh, because of the weather and other different factors. But by next Tuesday, Wednesday, we should have the, the full paving, uh, schedule of projects, uh, would be on the website. Okay, um, we were just, we spoke about, uh, resolution, which we just passed, resolution eight. We paid BHB Engineering, um, thirty-three thousand four hundred eighty dollars. Uh, you've heard me speak about the World War One, uh, war memorial that's, uh, crumbling, uh, in Agawam Park. And, um, the, um, engineering firm, uh, did the, uh, overall, uh, review, what needed to be done. Uh, we got estimates for the construction to rebuild, uh, the, uh, war memorial. And that's going to, uh, run upward to, uh, four hundred thousand dollars. So, um, I'm going to, uh, speak with this, uh, CBO and I hope that, uh, we will be able to have a, uh, fund drive, uh, to raise, uh, the money to, uh, repair this historic, uh, um, monument that we have to our, our veterans. Uh, so, uh, more to come on that. But if anybody hears or has any, uh, ideas or wants to take the helm of some fundraising or just want to send a check, uh, uh, we will be, uh, in need because we, we do want to do this. Uh, it's a very, very important part of our community and, uh, it means a lot to our veterans, uh, as well. Uh, I mentioned about the paving and once again, I'd like to, um, mention about the workshop. I'm going to give it another plug, uh, for tomorrow night. Please, please, uh, just you'll see on our website, do the survey, take part of it. It's, uh, time for your voice to be heard and how you would like to see our, uh, village look in, um, in the coming years. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, trustee Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to take the time to thank all of our departments, the park department and the participation from our police force, our ambulance and fire department. Because as we all know, this is Breast Health Awareness Month. And what we did was beautification with a purpose. So Village Hall is adorned in pink for the awareness and the support of breast health awareness. We here as a village want to blend our support, be able to have a place where people can come for information. And that this time that family members or anyone is going through can be somewhat easier and supported in knowing that the village cares. So I want to thank everyone, all departments. A special thank you to Kathy Sweeney and Mr. Joe Diamond, our parks department for making this part of a great success. We as Village Hall and our residents have joined the movement. This is just a time of the year that we're spearheading, knowing that the entire year is important towards this. So I thank everyone and encourage those to be part of the movement.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Uh, next is, uh, trustee McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mc, um, I guess, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to just, um, first of all, just say thank you to all the, uh, to Jeff and to all the presenters this evening. I know it was a lot of, uh, hard work and thank you for all that they do. Um, all the boards, I do want to mention a few quick points, uh, in reference to what happened at the last meeting. Um, you know, do we have a communication problem with our board? Um, I am, I'm just concerned, um, you know, uh, given the fact that I even, um, I've accidentally or purposely, purposely left off, um, some communications left, uh, regarding personnel. Um, excuse me, um, um, I believe that, uh, this is a direct infringement upon, uh, my jurisdiction as a trustee. Um, I, um, I would hope that this board, uh, going forward has, uh.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Uh, yes.
Ken Gray here, how are you?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, I don't know if this conversation is appropriate in, in front of a, uh, an open board meeting. If, if you have issues, um, concerning this, maybe you should, you know, directed to the board directly. I don't know if in an open public meeting that this is appropriate.
Understood, okay. I just wanted to say, uh, for the record, I, I, I was, uh, um, in reference to what, uh, Mayor Warren had said earlier about the leaf blowers. I'm more than happy to take that on. However, uh, that was not communicated to me prior to this meeting. We did have one correspondence, but, um, I just want to save the record that the residents that have been communicating with us, uh, want, basically want an outright ban of all gas leaf blowers. So I don't know what compromise, uh, our board can come up with, um, at this point. Um, however, I do think we should open a dialogue with them. So, um, anyway, so again, um, since, uh, I, I'll just say, um, at this point, we need to, uh, have a better, uh, communication. So, so, um, everyone stay safe at the, uh, during the storm today or tomorrow.
Thank you, uh, trustee McLaughlin. Um, I guess also on the communication, I know you're also the town, uh, liaison. And I was just hoping maybe you could update us, uh, the board about what's going on, uh, with the town. I know you were, uh, uh, making a communication regard. I know you were making a communication regarding concern for independent living. So we're just hoping you could update the board and the, the public on your work there.
Sure. So I haven't had any direct communication regarding that application. However, I do want to propose to the board, I would love to, I did mention this to Paul Travis, that if we are going to pursue a sewer district, which we are, I would suggest that I send this communication to the town that we possibly use that site for a plant meeting that we allow them to, to build a, some housing, but as a, as a bargaining chip, they then allow us to use the sewer plant that was built there. So that could be a great compromise to reduce the density of that proposal. But again, I have not heard back from the town. I don't know if Charlene has, but I have not heard anything back in that regard. And also, I do want to say also that Charlene, the commissioner and I did meet with the committee regarding, excuse me, regarding, excuse me. Regarding the issue with, you sent out to the, to the village employees, it was the, regarding the tests for the, I can't recall the actual name for the tests.
Well, the civil service, oh yes, that's true. Yes, the civil service. Yes, trustee McLaughlin and I sat, were asked to join the Southampton Town Diversity and Inclusion Task Force. And it's a great, you know, group of folks that are trying to, you know, address certain issues. They asked for the village to participate. It was a great call. And the town is having a, the town is having a civil service exam prep course at the Southampton Town Community Center up on, I think it's in Hampton Bay, it's over by the King Cullen Shopping Plaza. The details, I've circulated all of the information to Sandra Dozier to get word out there and to all of our department heads, to see if any of our employees might be interested in a prep class for civil service to be able to, you know, advance in their careers. And it's, I believe on the town website, so you can actually sign up and register, all the information is there.
Thank you for that synopsis. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee McLaughlin, for all of your hard work and dedication to the village.
What does the board think of that? Of us going to the town about that sewer plant site?
I think that we should ask our sewer task force for their opinion. And I think that they could give us some, some guidance.
Again, I did have correspondence with Paul Travis and he did seem to be open to the idea about, it didn't go beyond that.
I, I, I think it's also important to speak to Vince Tumi, your Labor Council, as to any issues concerning employment and whatnot.
Thank you and very excited about what the town is doing. I definitely applaud them for the, the civil service prep course. One of the most challenging ways, one of the most challenging issues that people have sometimes is how to get a job in a municipality, how to get a job in the village, how to get a job in the town. Many employment opportunities for better or for worse are driven by civil service exams and then test scores that, that one would get. And one of the things that we learned pretty quickly when we took off is that sometimes there's people who want to hire, but unlike a business, you actually can't just go and hire the person of your choosing in civil service. You actually have to take the exam and score at the top three on the exam in order to get placement. And so we hear from a lot of residents that they're interested in getting jobs, but unfortunately they can't. And so this town prep course is an excellent opportunity for people not only to get prepped for these exams, but to learn more about the, the civil service arena. And we'll definitely do our job to make sure that we can communicate this both in this board meeting. We'll send maybe an email blast and we'll also reach out to many leaders, community leaders across our village so that they can be aware of this, this prep course. But wanted to thank, thank you and Charlene for bringing this up and also thank the town board and supervisor and their staff for, for their preparation and their, their work on this, this course. So thanks again to everybody, trusted.
And I believe it's, it's November, it's Saturday, November 6.
And again, my apologies for having the correct name of the committee. I apologize.
They actually changed the name, so.
It's a good excuse, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Am I okay?
You're visual.
My visual. There we go. I would just like to reaffirm what trustee Arista has already mentioned twice about the importance of the Village Comprehensive Master Plan Public Input Session taking place tomorrow on Zoom at 6:00 PM. The Village Master Plan is the blueprint that determines what the Village of Southampton is going to look like going forward. It has not been revised for, since the year 2000, more than 20 years. It is the document that informs many of our codes. It informs the decisions of the planning board, the architectural review board and the zoning board of appeals. It determines how much high-density residences we will, developments we will have. Do we incentivize workplace housing? What happens to the hospital property when and if the Southampton Hospital leaves their place there in the village and moves out? All of these are critical questions that require input from the citizens of this village. So I encourage everybody to weigh in, look to the meeting tomorrow. If you cannot attend that meeting tomorrow on Zoom, reach out to the members of the Comprehensive Plant Committee. Bill Manger, former trustee, is the chairman of that committee, is doing a great job putting things together. He's joined by Eldon Scott, Jane Claire, Shonda Campbell and myself. Reach out to any of those people. My email is rstephenson@southhamptonvillage.com. Reach out to me with your ideas, your input, anything you want to learn more about, about this Village Comprehensive Master Plan. But it really is a critical time in the history of the village in terms of creating this new document that will really inform what Southampton Village looks like going forward. So let's do that. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Stevenson. Appreciate the efforts there and looking forward to joining at. Dot org, yes. So for the hundreds of people that are interested in contacting Roy, that's rstephenson@southhamptonvillage.org, not dot com. In any case, thank you, trustee Stevenson, good catch, cat. And just wanted to say a couple of things. First and foremost, wanted to thank, there's a lot of employees to thank, but in particular tonight, wanted to thank Bob Hand, building maintenance, comes in, does a great job, has great ideas and we really enjoy working with him. And then also wanted to thank Tin of our building department, who's come in, stepped up, has had some great meetings, has had offered great guidance to residents across the board. And so I just wanted to, there's many employees to recognize, but in particular, wanted to recognize Bob and Tin for all of their, their hard work. Number two, had a great meeting this past week or this past, yesterday actually, with the folks from the Gardner Foundation. They came out to look at the Southampton History Museum, as well as Southampton African American Museum, the Paris Concert Homestead. And we're hoping and cautiously optimistic about some grant opportunities we have with them and wanted to thank our various grant writers and, and our organizations who have applied and again, had a great meeting. So that was an exciting update that happened yesterday. Also wanted to mention that tomorrow night, wanted to thank Thea Frye, who invited us to the 10th Veterans Appreciation Dinner. So I'll be attending that prior to the, the master plan update. But very happy to, to join some of our veterans and other members of our community who have participated in the armed forces. So I'll be there tomorrow night as well. And while we're on the topic of veterans, we have Veterans Day coming up and we had a brief meeting with Mr. Grisnik today and wanted to thank him and the Veteran Affairs Commission for their work. And Officer Lubold, I believe, came up with a, or presented an idea that's, that we would like to implement and looking forward to this where unfortunately we'll be having 13 empty chairs at our Veterans Day ceremony to honor and to pay tribute to 13 brave Americans who lost their lives in Afghanistan. And there's no greater honor that we could, we could do in order to recognize their heroic service. And so we hope to have that plan implemented for Veterans Day. It's a day every year that, Hallow Day. So again, we just wanted to thank Mr. Grisnik, thank Officer Lubold for her work on this and looking forward to working with the Mr. Grisnik and the Veteran Affairs Organization. And lastly, again, just a reminder that if anyone has any donations for Halloween candy, there's a number of residents who could, especially on Elm Street, who could use it. So you can come to Village Hall and, and donate it. But very busy last week, we'll have, we'll have a very busy board meeting, the first board meeting in November. And with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing contractual litigation and specific village personnel matters. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are back. I'd like to make a motion to return to, to public session. The time is 9:00 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Before we conclude, we're going to take one action. And Ken, I'll let you come up with the, the resolution for us, but it's a, it's a board appointment.
I have it here too, Ken. I just wrote it down if you'd like me to read and you can correct me if I'm wrong.
Please, Charlene.
Okay. So we have, I need to have a motion to add a supplemental resolution to the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to add.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And supplemental resolution is resolved that the Board of Trustees approves retaining the firm, retaining Alice Cooley of the firm Matthews Kirsten Cooley P L L C to represent the village in an Article 78 case filed by Four Fountains LLC at a rate of $225 per hour.
Make the motion, the appointment?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, with that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting 9:02 PM.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye.